I know there's quite a few folks out there, which usually it means a controversy or something that's everybody in town is interested in. I welcome everybody here for the meeting and please use the sign-in sheet that's being passed around to make sure that we have a record of everybody that's attending. One of our select board members, Heather Chase, is attending would be a Zoom and the other four are here with us. First item on our agenda is additions or deletions to the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
I have none.
Hearing none, we'll go on to our second item, which is to approve our minutes from our December 20th Select Board Meeting and the Water and Sewer Department.
Make a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting regarding the Water and Sewer Department.
I'll second it.
Lee is the motion and Peter is the second. Any changes, corrections, additions, anything on the minutes?
Is this the Select Board Minutes or just the Water and Sewer Minutes?
Combine them all. They're pretty much, yeah.
Yes, on line forty-three on page twelve. Sorry.
Page twelve.
Yeah, page twelve, line forty-four. It says, "Ariana wanted to appoint him to be Chair." That is not accurate. I probably said "to be clear."
Clear.
So I said, "I want to appoint him to be clear." So if we can change that. It actually changes the meaning entirely.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a couple.
Yep.
First page, line thirteen, Jareen Slavinsky's last name is spelled with an I, there's no O in it. And that's also, there's another page further on, I haven't gotten to it yet. And then on page four, line thirty-nine, a typo talks about the trees across the river causing damming with an N. I think that should be two Ns. And then, oh yeah, page twelve, line thirteen, Jareen Slavinsky's last name is spelled. And that was it.
Anybody else have anything else on the minutes? All those who are in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Heather, you're okay with them?
Yes, and I couldn't find the mute button. Sorry. Yes.
It's okay. Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. I actually only have one item because it's been two short weeks with the holidays. The Hennessy property, as we are all aware of, so Mr. Hennessy passed away about a week and a half ago, which is leaving that property as we, as a reminder for those who may not have been on the board at the time, that property has a health order on it. It's property that was condemned by the town and it needs some pretty significant cleanup. There is a program that the town can access Brownfields' funds to do that cleanup. There is a process we have to go through. I have been speaking with the siblings, who are the only remaining heirs, and under my advisement, they have sought a local attorney. Steve Ankuda will be working with them. Steve and I chatted today. They're very much in agreement to let the town enter that process, convey it over so that we can access those funds. So there will be more coming as this, as this, it's very litigical and it's very, very deadlined process, so you'll, there'll be a lot that you have to do along the way, but we'll be entering that process just as an update. That's all I have.
And basically that is, so when the town does spend money, there are, there are reimbursements from the state to help us.
Correct. This program gets us access to state Brownfields and federal EPA money to clean up the site.
So is there still a deductible for the town or is there a deductible for the town relative to the funds?
No. No.
Anything else on old business? Any board members? Well, we'll move right along to our next item, which is a Class Four road, Bailey Hill Road, up in the Smokeshire region. I just want to say a few things before we get into this a little bit. There has been a lot of documentation that's been handed to the board to go over and read regarding this issue from both sides. It's a lot to digest. There are a lot of questions and concerns that we as a board have regarding a lot of this documentation that we're going to be seeking legal counsel probably in the near future to help us work through this. I don't see any action happening today regarding this issue. It is a lot to take on. It is a lot to work through and there are a lot of questions that have come up just by reading all these documents that have a lot of information in it. It took me quite a while just to get through some of the pages there. They're written in English, I think, some of them. They're hard to tell. It's hard with the wording, the way it goes. The maps are, some of them are a little more concise and exact than others. A lot of them are seen a little more on the primitive side, but it's hard to digest. And as I went through it, and I think probably the rest of the board too, a lot of questions came up. I don't think they're going to be addressed tonight. They might be. Some of these questions are probably more for counsel to help us with the decisions that we have to make on this. It's an extremely serious consideration that we're being asked to talk about and make a decision on, which is why I think it's important that we as a board do our due diligence and our work to make sure that we cover all the topics and all the questions that we might have and the things that this has as far as ramifications to our town. And I think when I look at it, it has huge ramifications, depending on which way it goes and stuff. It would affect our community. I think it would affect a lot of the communities in the area. I think it would affect part of southern Vermont and a lot of items that are related to this, to this one trail that we're talking about, this Class Four road. We as a board, about a month ago or two months ago, we were first starting to talk about Class Four roads and trying to go through them in town and maybe setting them up after the budget time was done and we're proceeding a little further and to start tackling some of the questions that come up with Class Four road. Well, this one kind of pushed it ahead of the line a little bit because of the way it is and the importance of it. We're going to do our best to have people that want to speak to this issue tonight to give us their opinions and their, some information that they would like to share and their reasons for what they think should be going on or what's happening. And I believe Mr. Paul Bidgood is here also to present the case, which was first brought forward by Paul Bidgood and Courtland Pennell, two landowners in town to have us even consider this Class Four road discontinuance, or I believe that's what it's called. There was a lot of work done by Peter Farr, who is a local historian, a person that helps us a lot with the local roads and sometimes historical considerations and boundary lines. And I thank him for his work that he did on this, but I think there's a lot more to consider that's than just what's in this information that we received as far as the historical information. I think there's a lot more answers that I'm, that I'm curious about. Maybe some will be answered tonight, but I think some of them are going to require a little more work and a little more time and more consultation with town attorneys and folks that would be a little more knowledgeable on this because I'm not an attorney. I don't pretend to be one and when I start looking at documents that are disinvolved and this much information in them, I think we as a board have to make sure that we're going to be making the right decision with the right advice behind it that goes. And because of the effect that it's, that it would have on this town, depending on which way it goes. At this time, I would ask Mr. Paul Bidgood if he would like to come forward and speak to us regarding this issue. Over to the microphone.
Well, thank you. I'd first like to introduce myself, Paul Bidgood, as Arnie has indicated, and I'm a landowner up in the Smokeshire area where this town high is located. I want to say hi to Heather, too, if she's out there. I haven't met you people before. I have met Julie and I have met Peter a few times over the years. He lives somewhat in the neighborhood. Well, as you know, I put together this documentation and I reviewed it with Peter Farr, the road researcher back in 2010, and it demonstrates that Town Highway 136, the Bailey Hill Road, was incorrectly put on the highway map in 2010, and my documentation speak to that. I reviewed that information with Peter Farr and at a higher level with Julie. What I reviewed with Julie, and Peter was there also, is represented in my December 21st meeting minutes. It's a higher level. It hits the high points. I'm glad early, I'm very happy of the way you've introduced this topic. It really does need considered discussion and review. And it is our community. It is our town. And myself and the adjoining landowners are entitled to our private property without any, without road there. The road was discontinued and I'm here to assist, to do anything I can to correct the problem that was put on the table in 2010, when it was incorrectly put on the map. So I think that's all I have to say unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions from any board members?
Nope, none at this time.
Yeah, not at this time.
No, thanks. Thank you.
The only thing I'm curious about, what is your, what do you want to see happen at the end of this? What is your desire for this discontinuance, considering the ramifications?
Yeah, it would be treated like all other roads that were discontinued. When the road is discontinued, it remains a private right-of-way for the landowners. So that, I just want to follow the normal course of events.
So when you say a right-of-way, it's only for those people that the right-of-way is assigned in the deed? Or is it assumed to be a right-of-way?
No, it's not assumed that by law, it's a right-of-way for the abutters to their former road bed. Any other questions?
I don't believe so.
Of course not. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation and again, I'm happy that you've set the tone for a legitimate review of the documentation and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the, in the audience that would like to speak to this issue or give any comment towards it?
I'm Dick Jewett, it's Chester resident. Good evening to Town Manager Julie and, and our honorable five-member board. As is evident, we have lots of our club members and some other, from other clubs are here also. Some of them have given up attending the Windsor County Snowmobile Club meeting to be here with us. I have been at the Chester Snowmobile Club Trailmaster for the past 35 years or so. My tasks are to oversee the building and the maintenance of our 59 miles of trail in six towns and two counties. I believe you all have received a letter I wrote yesterday, but with your permission, I would like to read it so that the general public has a knowledge, the knowledge about our trails in the Smokeshire area and in the northwest part of the town. Over the last 35 years, the Chester Snowmobile Club has improved Class Four roads tremendously in and around Chester. Back then, they were practically or completely impassable, including the Bailey Hill Road. In the Smokeshire area, we used to come down onto Chase Brook Road and travel along that to the Smokeshire Road, travel up that to Bridge 70. We have managed to get off those two roads except for about 150 yards on Smokeshire Road west from the Bridge 70, where we turn onto our bridge that we built. When we changed that trail from Chase Brook and most of Smokeshire, it cost us and vast $30,000 plus and a huge amount of equipment and volunteer time. We have since put more money into our bridge. In the past few years, we have expended over $6,000 repairing and rebuilding trails in the area, including the Bailey Hill Road. A year ago, we had to rebuild and build a huge amount of trail on the old Tomaso property back toward Chester from Smokeshire area due to an extensive logging that was done there again. We spent a huge amount of equipment, money and a lot of volunteer time. This year, we received a lot of damage from the July flooding in the Smokeshire Bailey Hill area. Again, a lot of money and volunteer time and equipment from contractors was spent to bring trails back into shape. We would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank those, all those contractors that donated so much material and equipment time. We ask that the town not waste our efforts and money that we have spent to maintain this section of our trail. If the Snowmobile Club were to lose this section of trail, it would cripple the club and possibly ruin us, as we would be losing our main corridor to the north, cutting us off from our neighboring clubs and the rest of the vast network of trails. Chester Snowmobile Club is asking that the town not discontinue the Bailey Hill Class Four road north from Smokeshire Road to the Cavendish Town Line. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
I could add to that also, Dick. As far as the value that the Snowmobile Club has given to this town, it's, it's a huge part of this town. It's an important part of this town. It is part of the fiber of this town and it has nothing but done good things for our town and in many more ways than just the Snowmobile Club, with scholarships, with education, with the winter carnival and a lot of the other things that you, that the club does in its time and stuff. It'd be really nice if it snowed, so it would help with the weather that we've been having Like I said before, there, I don't think there, there will be no action today taken on this. It's just a lot to digest and a lot to go through and the more I've gotten into this, the more questions that I have. And the questions that I have are better suited for our town council to see how this all works out and to see what some of these documents mean or don't mean. As I went through them, even though it was a pretty, it was a lot to the presentation. There was a lot of information there and it's just too much to take in for the short time that we had with it and so. And on top of it, I think it's important that the Select Board have a site visit to where that area is to see what's going on also, to make sure that we can wrap our head around what's happening there and where this property is and where the, where the Class Four road is and stuff.
Anybody else that would like to speak to this issue or make any comments? Please come up.
Mike Westeen, I just wanted to say that on this board 25 years ago, and we dealt with this same issue, we made a decision then. I was hoping you guys would hold that up. Plus, the other thing is, that road is high and with the amount of flooding regardless of snowmobiling, just for access, if some, we get another big flood like we've been having every couple of years to get in there. It may be needed at some point in time, too. So to give it up is going to be pointless.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
You know, part of it, when I was going through some of this information, I thought that back in the early 2005's or somewhere around there, when they started the ancient road program, the Act 178, that a lot of this would be laid to rest because there was a lot of controversy when that was all going on, too. And we'll see how that plays into this, too.
So what is our next step? Are we getting council involved in this? How is that?
I would. I would just shift this off to Jim and, and have him thoroughly research the documentation that Mr. Bidgood provided, to look through all this and to guide you as a board on what your responsibilities are, what the land records say. I think it's, I think it's important to get an unbiased opinion, you know, and to thoroughly search those records as well. I think Paul had it.
Besides that being the case, I would, I think it would be probably appropriate for us to be at a meeting with Jim, because I have a lot of questions that I do want to bring up here in anticipation if this thing gets taken to litigation, something that we say or do might come back to us. So I would like to speak to the attorney to answer questions that I have and to keep it private like that because of possible future issues that might come up from it, too. I, going through it, I, there's quite a few things that I think.
Well, as you said, there's a substantial amount of information that's part of this package that we got and looking through it, I spent a couple hours trying to put my head around it and still am not entirely clear how to make any sense of it. So I, I think getting somebody else to look at it, especially in the attorney, would be a good move.
I have a question for you. Is there somebody here who's a resident of town, of the town of Chester that is in favor of throwing the road up?
What do you mean throwing the road up?
Discontinuing.
What was the question again, Peter?
Any resident that's here of the town of Chester?
Yep.
Who is in favor of discontinuing the road?
I don't see too many hands going up.
No, I don't see any either.
Yep.
But Jim needs to look at the legal history to see if the road has already been discontinued and that piece needs.
Yep, 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 yes. Nope.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Kevin Forbes. I live in Andover, the town of Andover. And to answer Peter's question, I'm against throwing any roads up. Any roads. As more and more of our land is being sold off, it's getting harder and harder for us to recreate around here. Unless you're a skier, a hiker, a cross-country skier, we're pretty much left in the cold. I mean, we're out to defend ourselves here. This is something that has been in this state since I was a young boy. I see it going away and it's, it's a shame. We bring a lot, it brings a lot of money into this state and all I ask is the committee to consider our needs and our wants. We put a lot of money and a lot of effort to improve these trails. We are good stewards of the land. We watch for people that disrespect the property. You won't get any better. And like I say, it's getting hard for us to recreate around here unless you're a skier or a hiker, backpacker, or something like that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Paul, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I really appreciate these last comments here. My family has owned that property since 18, or the property in the region since 1812 and you'll find no better steward of property in Vermont than my family and the nine generations that have been up there. We are perfect stewards of our land. We just don't want the use of a discontinued road to impact the use of our land. I wanted to mention that the certificate of highway mileage will be coming up in February and that's where the board will have to certify under oath what the roads are. So this is a pressing matter. I'm here to assist in any way I can so that you can properly sign that certificate coming up here in a few short weeks. Thank you again.
I think the timetable that we're speaking of, if you're mentioning February 10th, I'm not going to be looking at a timetable. I'm going to look just to make sure we do our job correctly and do what we have to, to get to the answers that we have. It's, the certificate will be signed the 10th, whether we're done or not with this project or this consideration or this problem or this road, however you want to look at it. But as far as a deadline or something that we have to work for to get to it, I think that's a small consideration on my part at this point. My duty, my civic duty, and I think the rest of the Select Board here, is to the town, is to the town roads and then the town land and everything else. Like the gentleman was stating, we're, we're just the temporary stewards for this land and for the town and for the roads at this time. And I think that we have to make sure that we are worthy stewards of the land and the roads and the town here to make sure that future generations have access to it and have abilities to take advantage of what we have here and stuff as a part, as opposed to everything being closed down around it. So we're going to do our best and we're going to try to do the right thing when it comes to it and follow through with all the work that we have to do to get to that, to get to that answer.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions?
Um, Arnie, it's Heather.
Go ahead, Heather.
I just appreciate the thoughtful approach of making sure we have council input and making the decision with all the knowledge we possibly can. So thank you for that, Arnie.
All right, Heather. Anyone else?
Okay, I'm just going to disclose that I don't have a snowmobile and I am a regular user of that road. And I think there are others that use that road, too, besides the Snowmobile Club.
And I'm a resident of Chester and I use almost every Class Four road I could find around here for walking and hiking and recreating and I'm sure there's a lot of people with that same story. And it's important, I mean, it's a small town. It's hard to avoid any conflict. You can call it a conflict of interest, but I just think it's just having the towns best in mind when we're, when we're up here doing what we do. And I appreciate that you're bringing that out, Peter.
Just like to say, I was like.
Give us your name, sir.
Connor Eklund, from the Stoneharts in Edery.
What's your last name, Connor?
Eklund.
It's further records.
Yeah, Eklund, E-K-L-U-N-D. Just as a local business in town, that we're directly on the snowmobile trail. So business that travels through from places like Lundy Derry down south that come up north or from north down, we get, as a business, we get kickbacks and stuff, or people traveling through stopping for rooms or coming to stay headed on the trails, headed up north. And the traffic that comes through for like the fuel, the food, the rooms, it'll impact at least us, I don't, I'm not speaking for all businesses, but at least for us, it will impact us greatly during the winter because it'll split the business from the skiers to the snowmobilers. And there's probably at least half that comes from the snowmobile side of things. But just as the local business side for us, it will impact us greatly.
Thank you, Connor.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that when this becomes back on the agenda, just keep an eye out on our agenda that's published before our meetings as it comes along. If there's, should we have an email list, maybe, of people that want to?
I could try. If the Snowmobile Club wants to appoint a person that I can keep in contact with, that would be great and then you guys could disseminate amongst yourselves. You wanted to be Lee. And then, Mr. Bidgood, I have yours and I have Courtland's as well. Anybody else on your side? Okay. So I will, everything will get sent off to the attorney. That's going to take time in and of itself, but I will keep everybody apprised of when this is going to come back to the board for a board meeting.
We have a meeting on Sunday and we will appoint somebody there.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. I'm good.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. We could take a little quick recess if some people want to bail on the meeting or if you want to stick around for the rest of it. You're welcome to.
Is that my question?
Your feelings are hurt now, aren't they?
You thought they liked you, you had friends.
They wanted to find out where every dollar goes.
Huh? I don't know. What they want to find out is what the tax rate is. That's the key. That is the punchline. Why don't you just keep it? Because I think I have another.
Do you have another one?
I have another. I try. I try. But if you had a spear pancreas, I'd take it. See, I think if you're going to be serious about this, the people whose land this goes through, wouldn't show it. Only the one person that's on the road.
Okay, nobody wants to stay. I don't know why. These are good times. Yeah. I think you just step out.
All right.
Do we have to have any kind of motion to finish that topic? No?
No, it wasn't a hearing.
There's no action.
Yeah, you're just, you give me guidance.
So are you going to send out all that information again? Or can I throw this stuff out?
It's entirely up to you if you want to keep a record or not. I will be sending everything to Jim Carroll. And I've already kind of had some discussions with him today. Anyway, we were talking about other topics.
Is this part of the meeting?
Yes, yep. And so he knows that this is likely coming his way. So I, tomorrow, since you have directed, I will take all of this and package it up and send it up and he'll take a look and then we'll get some direction from him. And I'm sure once he's had a chance to look through, then we can set an executive session meeting with you guys to have a discussion. But we'll get him this and let him digest and review it first. It's a lot to discuss, yeah.
So one thing, I guess, I would ask for any further submissions is to have people put their names and the date on it.
Sure.
You know, Dick Jewett read a letter and I had no idea who it was from.
I actually didn't know who it was either. It was left on my desk. Didn't know who it was from until we got up and read it.
Yeah. So I'm glad that that was identified, but there was other letters that didn't really give the background
Sure.
of what it was all about.
All set? Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Moving right along.
We'll get back to the more.
I, I have one more point to make.
Yeah?
I think we need to give Mr. Bill Lindsey an award for staying with us.
We had 40 people in the room and Bill's the last man standing or sitting in this.
You'll get a prize.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey.
Thank you.
Alarm policy adoption. We've gone through this at the last meeting and we had some minor changes, basically.
Well, they were, they were pretty big, but there were a lot of them. Now, once I really read, once I read through it.
They weren't minor.
They changed no content, let's say it that way. Lee did find a couple more things that truly were purely grammatical, nothing of substance in any way that I did change. So you, this copy that I have here is the completely clean. Again, it was a formatting issue on one of the last pages, appendix B, and then a couple typo things that he caught as well, but.
Yeah, but the gist of it was.
No content has changed. No content has changed.
Don't scare me like that.
I'm sorry.
So I would entertain a motion to adopt the town of Chester alarm ordinance as written?
So move.
Second.
Please, the motion, and Peter Hudson's the second. Any further discussion on this? When is this going to happen?
So this is an ordinance, so it'll be in 20 days.
20 days after our signature?
Correct.
I'm sorry, did we have an ordinance before?
No. Not on alarms, no. This is brand new for us.
We had a draft copy a couple, three, two, what, two, three?
Yeah, two or three weeks ago, yeah. Or two or three meetings ago, yeah. But no, there's no prior ordinance.
It was brought about because, a lot of it was because false alarms and not knowing who to contact when an alarm did go off.
Our people are just not managing them, yeah.
So multiple calls for unmanaged alarms that we were doing for free, which you can, you know, you should get a real one, but after you've been said it doesn't work and you come every few days.
It's a use of manpower and time.
No, the logic makes total sense.
I do have a question kind of related to this.
Because it's a legal document and it's dealing with alarms.
And is this something, did we, was the draft based on an existing draft?
Yes.
Different town.
Correct.
Plagiarism the best.
We have permission. We had permission.
We do that, not a lot.
A lot, and people do it from ours. I send copies of our ordinances all over the place to people.
I'm honest.
No, no sense to reinvent the wheel if someone has a policy that makes sense in a town like ours.
I think we had a question.
Well, it doesn't relate to this, but it relates kind of because what do we do with repeat offenders relative to fires or, because I won't say who, but somebody I know has repeatedly dumped their live ashes outside and driven home to Connecticut and the brush catches on fire and the fire department shows up and puts it out. And it's happened several times. So is there anything that we can do relative to that? I mean, my first implication is send them a bill
Yeah.
every time that happens.
Yeah.
Ding them $1,000 or whatever it costs to roll a truck up there.
Yeah. I can, I'll talk to the fire department about that because I'm sure they'll know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yep.
Makes sense. It just sounds like if there's going to be.
It's totally responsibility, yeah.
You know, it's like, why can't you leave the ashes in your stove while you go away? That's where it's safe.
Right.
And then come back and dump them out before you light the next fire.
Right.
Well, I think it was Ledgewood down in, out at Echo Lake where they used to put the ashes in a brown paper bag and left them on the deck. And then the condo disappeared, never mind the field. But I would think that anything with a monetary fine would have to be incorporated into an ordinance.
Well, this is alarms. This is not fire. This is not responding to a fire. This is something different. But, but yes, fines, I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
But what, didn't we have a policy because it was related to, like, if we send, roll the truck because there was an accident, you know, and you build back to the truck?
Right, we are doing that.
Yeah.
So like, we had a hazmat, that incident on Route 10. We're sending a bill to the insurance company. We don't need to have a policy in order to do that.
No, no, that's, well, no, because that's there, so.
But the fire is.
I know, I need to investigate on the billing for fire stuff. I got to check that out.
Oh, all right, yeah.
And motor vehicle accidents is something completely different. So I just, I need to have a conversation with the chiefs.
It might be a law already on the books for negligent behavior.
It may be.
Right.
There may be.
It might be a misdemeanor criminal offense or a civil offense for doing something like that. I mean, out in the, in the boonies or the country, it's probably not that big of an issue. It could be with a big fire, but if you start doing something like that in the village, that's a little different.
Well, the temptation is, oh, they've done it again, let's let their house burn down. But, you know, that's not being.
We have to respond.
You know, it just seems to me that people need to be responsible for their own actions and not rely on somebody else and somebody else to pay for it. You know, that's the part that I'm concerned about.
Makes sense. Julie, you'll look into that.
Yeah, yep. But here's your ordinance to sign.
So all those in favor of approving the town of Chester alarm ordinance as written? Please say aye.
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 No one, anybody opposed?
Oh, we have our names. Can't get your sign anywhere. We're out reading it now. Beginning? agenda, anything else to sign? Okay.
Remember I said I printed out these for three or four extra sheets that get sent later this afternoon?
Uh huh. I can make your copy before you go.
They're sitting on my desk, yeah. Anyways, our next item on our agenda is our 2024 general fund budget. Julie, can you take us through that?
I can. So pretty much, most expenses have, are in, there'll be a few stragglers that we get in early January that are actually December expenses. So there'll be a few things that come in for 2023 actuals. Nothing, there's nothing alarming or nothing big that will be coming at this point. So this budget, I guess I will just say right out the bat, right out the gate, this budget as you have it reflects an increase of approximately $378,000. Important to remember that 176, 636 of that is the principal payment for the EMS bond. This is the first year that that payment becomes due. So we knew that this spike was coming. So if you pull that out, if you pull that number out of the 378, which you kind of need to do to get an accurate picture, our budget is up about $200,000, which is 5%. As I noted in your memo, inflation at this point is about eight and a half, so we are below inflation. There is, what this budget does include, I will say, in that number, we ended 2023 with a highway surplus of about $186,000, again, primarily due to the flood. Because remember, highway labor was pulled out of the general fund and moved to the flood account. So it's showing a surplus, which is great for us, but we need to remember, we're not going to have that every year. So this year, we have $186,000 highway surplus. This budget is not proposing that you use all of that. This budget is proposing that you use $100,000 of that to help. It will reserve for you $86,000 to help handle whatever may come in 2024 that we don't know about. This budget also is proposing, we ended 2023 with a capital fund surplus of about $279,000, which is what we had anticipated. In highway, there are two loans that have their last payment in 2024. We did this in 2023, you recall, some of you may recall. Their last payment in 2024, roughly $50,000 total. So this budget proposes that that comes from the capital plan fund balance, again, to help lower. So those are two things that we've done to keep it to around a $200,000 increase. There are, if you feel that that amount is still too high, there are some things we can look at, nothing that is huge dollars, but there are a couple things that you could take, projects that you could take and pull from ARPA if you chose to. The clapre valve for the library, that was $15,000.
Where is that?
That's in the library budget.
So it's in the library?
That is on page.
Yep.
Got it?
Yep.
Library is.
They denied.
Yep. So that's, their $15,000 could come out there. The same page down to revitalization, historic facility maintenance, you've got $30,000 in there, that's the match to the Yosemite windows. My only concern in pulling that number out is you want to have something in there next year, so if you pull up the 30, it's zero, you're just going to have to up it $20,000 next year, but if you wanted to, you know, that's just a, I always look at not pulling things out that are just going to spike the budget next year, looking for those true one-time things that are a savings. The other thing that is in this budget is the additional position for listers and zoning that is in here. If we really had to, we could pull it. I really would love to leave that. If we can, that, those two departments need help. I have two employees there that are both amazing at what they do, but they're not going to be doing that job for probably maybe a couple more years. And it would be really nice to get somebody in there now that is full-time, that is learning the jobs, to make transition easy. In a couple years, we could talk about if we still need a second full-time person. But zoning and listers is the one, and zoning, listers, and finance are the three areas throughout the state where municipalities are having a really hard time finding people because they're part-time, in a lot of cases, they're less than part-time. But they are what create your entire grand list. They are critical. They're more important than most of us as far as staff. So it's just, they're needing help, they're very busy. Short-term rentals is adding a piece for them, housing is adding a piece for Preston. You know, there's economic development stuff that would like to be done. It would be great to use that office. So, again, but that does represent about $50,000 in the budget. So if, you know, that is there as well if the board felt that it wanted to lower. I just look at this as, this is what it costs to run the town. This is where we're at.
There's no frills on there.
There's not, there's no frills.
So I just have a question because when you get to current taxes.
Yep.
You're actually anticipating less revenue?
So that number is actually a calculation based on the formulas, because you got to remember that in that revenue is school.
Yep.
School education tax rate has not been set yet. So that number comes from an estimate from the state
Yep.
of what they're anticipating. That's what generates that number. That's why you can never see consistency with it.
Yep.
And while you'll see what we budgeted and what we took in for 2023 was dramatically different, but what you'll see on the end is what we budgeted for payment also balances the same.
Balance it, yeah.
I wish we did not have to show
The school.
the school payments in our budget. It makes it very confusing and very difficult, especially when it's a guess. Because we don't know, we won't know until June 30th.
So that $4.8 million is a total guess?
So that 4.8 million is a total guess?
Yes.
So, and it was actual through the end of last year, 5.7?
5.7, but if you look at the tax revenue side, it's, the tax revenue side is up comparably.
Right. Well, they're going to set the school tax rate anyway.
June 30th. And, and, and we set our, I mean, if we had, if we were on a fiscal year, if we were on a July to June budget.
Yep.
We wouldn't have an issue. But we're not. We're on a calendar year. And so when we set our budget, we don't know what the school is going to be. And so they have this spreadsheet that is about five pages and nobody in the state understands, except maybe two people, that come up with these formulas. It's true.
No, I.
It's true. Literally, you, you can get very few people to explain it to you, but they have a spreadsheet of formulas and then they generate estimates. And then each month, after the school tax gets set, we get a new spreadsheet that keeps adjusting it. So it's a, it's a total guess.
So how's, how's everyone feel about the budget?
Well, to be perfectly honest with you, I think I need to spend a little bit more time looking at it. But some of the things that we've talked about, um, I, I, I'm not sure what to think. I know libraries in there and that we're showing 101,000 for them. You know, the school is always a thorn. Yeah, there's a bunch of other stuff that just, I, I, I know we're being as conservative as possible with expenditures and budgeting and all that. And I just, the concern that I have is how are we as a taxpayer going to pay for it? You know, 8%, inflation is killing everybody. And so I know that we have to do certain things and, and I'm not sure, not having gotten into the weeds, if we can cut anything. So I, you know, and I always feel this way at budget time.
That's hard.
It's, it's a tough.
I've been struggling for weeks. Like, how do you, like, where, where is it going to give?
Right.
Something is going to break. It's not just municipal. Unfortunately, what happens is the municipal budget is the one that gets hit because it's really the only one you have control over.
Right. Yeah, and that's why I always.
And I don't know how fair that is.
That's why I always gripe about the school budget and we have zero influence on that.
Correct.
You know, the, the taxpayers want it either votes for or against it. And as we heard last meeting, most taxpayers aren't paying attention.
Correct.
I, I, I'm not sure what to do at this point.
I applaud you and department heads and everybody else has put time and energy into the budget. You know, I just wish, wish it wasn't.
Oh, agreed. And I'm hoping, I, you know, at some point, like I've said, I, I mean, at some point, the economy has to settle. It's either going to settle or it's going to collapse. It's, something is going to happen with it, right? And, but I think there's an understanding that people need to have, that if you're seeing it at home in your home budget, you need to anticipate it's going to be in the municipal budget too. Like, there's not, I, I, we can't not buy blades for the plows. We can't not buy chains for the grader. We can't not, um.
Medical insurance.
Med, yeah, then you got the medical insurance, which is why the cost of living is, uh, the cost of living increase for employees is at 3%. Because, and I kept it low when it's actually eight. I kept it at three because health insurance went up too, and that is part of our salary. So that is, you know, that is a hit.
So here's another question for the various departments. And I'm not sure how to put this without getting into trouble, but for those departments that, um, well, I can't say it that way either. Are we, the various departments, are they breaking even for the most part, the ones that, um?
Generate revenue?
Generate revenue. I mean, like, I know highway, we're never going to make money doing that.
None of these, none of these departments are fully generating, none of these departments are fully self-sustaining. No.
So right, like recreation and the library and.
No, no.
Rec, some of the programs are.
Some of the programs are, right, but the department itself is not, because we don't charge to use our facilities.
No.
But how close are we? I mean, is it like
Well.
costing us a whole lot more money to have a rec department than not have it or? I mean, I, I guess I'm looking at the, at the cost benefit. Not that I would ever want to get rid of the rec department, and that's why I really didn't say anything. But on the other hand, is there something that we can do? I, I know that the rec department is something that our townspeople love and enjoy and out of town or whatever. So it's not something I think we should do away with, but just wondering if there's, um, is it bringing in more revenue per se, not just for that department? But is it bringing in more than it's costing us in benefits to the taxpayers and?
Well, I mean, revenue wise, no. How you rate its benefit?
Right, and that's a.
I mean, that's hard to do, right? That's an economics thing and your young families come because of our, you know, all that. I mean, that's just really subjective in my mind. As far as revenue generating, none of our departments are self-sustaining financially. None of them. Police, fire, ambulance, none of them. They are all municipal and not.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm not expecting them to be. You know, just, you know, looking at it's like, okay, how do we, how do we justify the increase? And the increase is less than inflation, so.
Correct. And the other thing to look at is your revenues are up. Your revenues are increased too, because one of the charges to the department heads this year has been, we know expenses are going up, let's look at where can we generate revenue? Things like alarm policies that you just, that you just did. There are things like that. Ambulance, you know, getting the advanced EMTs in there now, we are billing at higher rates. So that revenue line should start increasing. I won't talk about the other divisions of public safety because they're not supposed to be generating revenue. But they are, right? And so, um, because, you know, that, it just does. It just does create that. But, um, billing for hazmat calls.
Yep.
When we normally haven't. Those types of, those types of things.
Now we do go forward.
Correct. So they're looking at things of what can we do? Where are areas where we, where we maybe have never charged, but geez, you know, these are cert, like, like the alarm policy, right? Like, that doesn't, if I don't have an alarm, I shouldn't be paying for your alarm.
Right.
Right? That, that's a site-specific thing. So where are those other areas where we can do that? We are going to be looking at zoning fees. Preston is doing some research about, um, oh, he's not on, is going to do some research about, um, what we charge in comparison to other towns.
Right.
What are we charging for zoning fees? We're doing the same thing with cemetery fees. Amy's gathering a bunch of information. So we're looking at all those things to say, are, are revenues keeping in line? Are there revenue increases that we can come up with? Maybe things start to be more of a pay-for-your-service versus this is free because you're just a resident.
But that reminds me of something Peter said a couple of meetings ago, and that's related to the tax where taxes related to current use.
Current use, right. Yeah, but that's another one where they bring a spreadsheet and twitch their magic lawn.
But they're, they're collecting or theoretically.
They're supposedly reimbursing us for fees that, that we have deducted people's taxes for. And we're, I don't think we're getting 100% reimbursement for that.
Right, and that's, that was something else that would be revenue increase, just to look into that. I don't know where to start with that.
I, I don't either, but I know people that do. I don't know where to start, so.
Yeah, well, my, my question is, can we get the ambulance to stabilize? When I look, when I look at the budget for the ambulance, it's, it's always, I don't, and the thing is, you've kind of made it good because according to this, we have no bad debt in the ambulance, which has to be totally ridiculous.
Yep. We're doing, we're doing good, and it is. And now that we're getting the advance, the ambu, what's, the issue with the ambulance is it's an expensive department.
All right, oh. Well, no, yeah, but it's, it's like, if you keep getting bonked because it runs way over, that's.
Correct.
How, how, how do, how do we keep, you know, if you're going to say we have an increase and this is it, you know, how do you hold that one, which is obviously the wild card of all of them?
I think that we, I think 2024's budget will hold. 2023, there was a lot that happened that was not budgeted. There was a lot of, um, changing of chiefs.
Changing staffs.
After, after the budget was set and then really assessing needs. I mean, I don't want to go on the public record and talk about all the issues that were happening, but there was a lot happening there.
Right.
Um, and so I think 2024, you will, is showing a stable budget.
All right, the other questions, we have that public funds account.
Yeah.
And can we dip into that for any of this stuff? Or I, I mean, this seems to me like we have this discussion every year, it's a bunch of money there and can we use it? And I know I saw something about buying a tractor or something like that.
There is a tractor that would be about 15,000. When we asked previously about a tractor, the response given to me was no. Because they feel that that is, the trustee of public funds are their elected officials. And I, the justification of the no was because they felt that that was just routine maintenance and equipment. Like they, last year, they paid for the shed. I didn't fight it, Lee, because they paid for the shed last year, they paid for the trees, they paid. We got some, some money from them. What I would like to look at, I don't know if I should say this in a public meeting, but I will. One of the things that I just want to get an answer to, um, most of those bequests were left for two categories. They were left as poor funds or they were left as cemetery funds. That's the gist, are those two buckets.
And that's the public fund?
That, those are the public funds. There's about eight, $900,000 sitting there. We all know it's difficult to get access to those funds. Some of that money is Cypress Minerals money. That is the town's, is just sitting there. So that money you do have access to. The conversation has been, does that help go towards solar, if we ever get to a place of where we can negotiate it? But, you know, bequests that were left, I'm going to be like you, I got to think, be careful how I say this. Bequests that were left in the late 1800s. That was the intent of the gift. Times change. We no longer have poor funds. We no longer have poor farms. We no longer have, how? Because we have a welfare system, right? We, we have a welfare system in our country. That's what the poor farms were.
Yes.
That, that was your community system that helped make sure everybody was good, right? That was the purpose of them. We don't have that anymore. There's another program that came federally to help with that and statewide. And very little of that money is given out to families that are in need in our community. I feel, I would feel different if that money was being used on a regular basis to help families that are in trouble in our community, but it's not. It's, it is hard to get access to those funds. And, and, and we have done this locally. We did this at our church a few years ago, where we had some old bequests that sat there. They were given for a very specific reason. They were just sitting there, sitting there, sitting there. The church had a ton of projects that it needed to do to the church building itself. We went to an attorney and found that, that no, what you really need to do is take the base of what was bequested, set that aside, and all the rest of that is free to use for other things.
Right.
So I, I'm not saying that we should do that because I'm not a proponent of, oh, 800,000.
Yeah.
What can I buy? Like, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. But at some point, it would be really nice to have a discussion around that. I have a hard time raising taxes, 8, 9% every single year, over and over for the past, what, three years? This will be three years now, when we're sitting on 400,000 in economic development funds, 900,000 in trustee of public funds. It, it's har, it's kind of hard to do that. So I, but I don't know what you do with it.
Well, yeah, but why, why can't we take, if you want, why can't we take the poor funds, right? You're, you're doing a housing committee. We know that we need to have a stake. It's actually to help out working people that need a hand. You know, it's seen, and that's.
That may be a perfect catalyst for.
That's right. And then that comes, that's, you know, I think you have a couple bucks in it here now, but we're talking that we need a better stake.
Right.
If we're going to do something.
It's a good idea, Peter, actually.
Right.
But it actually can be translated, I mean, if you, if, if someone wants to go, me, do research on what was the definition of a poor, poor farm, you can probably dig through the wording of that definition and find a way that says the economic, or the housing development area is serving the same purpose that the old poor farm did, and therefore we are in correlation.
Along those lines, I'm wondering if there are other pots of money that are out there that are not being used, that are being saved for a rainy day, that could be used, not necessarily town money, but, you know, some other entity that is either asking for town money or expecting or benefiting from town expenditures. And wondering whether we say, you know, we can't fund you at this level because we can't afford it, number one. We're going to be in the poorhouse, but number two, you're sitting on this pot of money. You know, it's like the trustee of public funds, we've had this discussion before. How do we change the attitude of the trustees to allow that money to be used for the public? That's what it's for. You know, if we just sit on it, sure, we're making money, we're making a little bit of interest, but we're not able to use it for the good of the community.
Well, it's like a town meeting, those articles that come up, I would think those would be perfect places for the trustees of public funds. They, they're dealing with needs of the community on organizations that are nonprofit, that are helping the community in all different kinds of ways. I would think that that'd be a perfect spot.
Oh, yeah.
For them to, to give money towards, because that's, that raises our taxes every year about $40,000.
It's about 35, it's about 35 grand in allowances.
Yep.
And, and it would be.
And, but that's not included in your 85%. So it's, it adds another penny.
Oh, it adds.
Because it's raised separately. It's not raised in your general fund. Yeah.
That would be an interesting.
Well, you'd have, you'd have to write it into the article though.
Yes, it, it couldn't go into effect necessarily for this year because the way the articles are worded, it's.
Yeah.
But it's, I mean, this is my thing, like, you, you get through the budget, you get through the budget, getting it adopted for 2024, but I think I alluded to this at the last meeting, or maybe it was just with you, Arnie, that I think these discussions need to take place in 2024 about, before we get to the 2025 budget, right? We need to have these discussions about where are these areas and have real discussions that are probably not going to be popular about, um, is, is this budget at a level that we feel the town can sustain for a long period of time? Or do we need to take a look at each individual department and, and what does, and it's not just for this board of five to decide that. It's community input. What do you as a community want? Are you okay with this? I mean, the budget passes all the time, but by 100 people out of 3, 3,300, right?
I may regret this.
I'm probably going to regret several things I've just said.
The way the, our, the planning committee in zoning took apart the whole thing and did chunk by chunk. Perhaps we need to reflect on whether we can make a commitment to in '24, taking either a, an, an element of it regularly, starting at the beginning of the year to discuss and evaluate. But then also including things like, you know, today, we're going to do ambulance and public funds. Next time, we're going to do rec and economic development fund. So we look at a couple of different topics. One is budgetary, and then the other is resource-related. And explore it and make it all working sessions. So we're not, we're not facing AMI voting up or voting down. We get a chance to solicit ideas from the community and ourselves. Because I have to, my response to this budget, you asked, what do you think? This seems precarious. It seems like, yes, we can get it through this year, and yes, this is what we need. But we're setting a bed that we can't maintain. It just feel, it feels like.
Agreed.
We're just, if it's an 8% increase, it feels like a 5% would be better. Like, we're just that little hair that starts to feel uncomfortable.
Yeah. And I just say, what, I agree with you. I agree with you.
25, are we doing this again? 26, is the select board doing this again? And oh, it's just a little more, ooh, it's hard, but it's just a little more. And at what point?
And, and this is where the discussions need to have, but, but what needs to be understood with this is if you're going to cut back on this, you're cutting a service.
And that, and.
So you're either cutting a police officer, or you're losing an ambulance department, or you're doing something that is a big impact to the community. So, and that's really important for people to understand. This is not a, okay, so we're just not going to do the bridge next year. We'll push it that year. That's not what this is. We're at a point, this is the cost to run the town as it is right now. There is nothing extra in this budget. So if, because of the services that we have, we are a small. So if, because of the services that we have, we are a small town, I get told all the time, you're a small, large town.
Yes.
I get told that a lot.
Yeah.
So if we're maintaining that, that comes with a cost. And again, you, you can't have your grocery bill double at home and think that the bills for the town are not going to double.
Right.
Some of them have tripled.
I think what I'm trying to articulate, I.
But we're getting to a point, Arianna.
I'm pretty clear on where we are with the '24 budget. Like, I'm not, I'm looking ahead going, okay, we can, we can feel uncomfortable, lose a little sleep, squeak through, but let's try and avoid that, like you've just said.
Yeah.
By exploring this, but also by, we, we've heard in the last meeting and this meeting, we wish there was more engagement or awareness from the voters in the town. Let's go out and say, you don't like your tax rate, on this night, we're having an informational session, this is what we're discussing.
And maybe you do it quarterly. Maybe you do something at the begin, at the middle month of each quarter.
Yeah, I mean, that, that.
You know, and have a quarterly, have a quarterly work, work session.
I'm encouraging more work for us.
Yeah.
But I would feel a hell of a lot better next year at this, if I'm here. Whoever the select board is, next year at the budget situation, it, I would feel better if we had spent more time this year digging in before we got to this point.
And that's what I was going to say, was that we need to find a way to get the voters engaged.
Yeah, agreed.
Um, I, it, it's a printing problem where nobody shows up, nobody knows we're voting on stuff, nobody knows what we're voting for, nobody's paid attention to the numbers, and it's one of those things where I think maybe what we need to do is each one of us invite 10 people to the, to the board meetings for the next couple of months. And say, I mean, I'd love to have the whole room full of people here, no offense, Bill, but it seems to me that this is why we get pushed back, people don't understand what we're going through, and they're, it just, it's frustrating.
Well, is there any, is there any precedent for, we do two select board meetings a month. Is there any precedent looking ahead at '25? We were able to cancel a couple in the summer, which was delightful. But is there times when we might have a select boarding at the meeting and meant, and an informational meeting in place of the second meeting? So as opposed, so somehow doing something where it's not an agenda with six unrelated items to each other, but it's a meeting where, you know, budget exploration, review and discussion, only item on there. Everybody come on that night.
That, that is totally our choice as a board on how we want to work something like that.
You couldn't do it every month.
No.
Because you get months where there's, where every agenda is really full.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'm wondering if we use, instead of making yet another meeting for ourselves, if we were able to identify two meetings next year where it's only budget discussion, question and answer, community engagement.
Yep. Absolutely.
Well, one of, one of the things is when you really go back and look at the, at the zoning that just got passed, there are a ton of things, you know, you want to have a restaurant in town, it's a conditional use. And you really, you know, you made a gift shop, conditional use. You know, you're, if, if you're, those are, the commercial businesses are what pay your taxes. And our planning boards is thinking we're still in a little, perfect little town. And you got to get, be able to open up to a certain amount so you can generate some revenue besides being in the same, same hole. I mean, the, the land use question is huge for me because you have to think about that, you know, we've been subsidizing all this open land, and the state is telling us that we're not, which is, that irritates me knowing. Because if you, if you, as landowners could look and say, well, who really owns most of this land that is getting the tax break? They're not poor.
No. Arianna and I were having that discussion the other day.
Are you talking about property tax breaks?
They get, there's a current use property tax, so ag or forest.
Yep.
So your property can be, so if it was a lot, say.
I, I think I just jumped to the end, and there's large property owners who are getting that benefit, but.
Half of Chester is getting that benefit.
Yeah.
So, but the thing is, is the difference in tax rate is, for instance, forest last year was $175 an acre for something that would have been valued at a couple thou, you know, $1,000 an acre. That makes a huge percentage difference in the amount of revenue that's generated.
And, and we're paying for that one way or another.
Well, that's true.
At the state level, or we're missing out at the local level, but we're subsidizing that tax break.
Well, that's true, but Burlington is the place that wants us to have 50% of our stuff undeveloped and they can develop everything. You know, so they, if they want to have undeveloped land, then they should be able to subsidize it.
But that's, that's a discussion at the state level, because that is basically a state.
Well, we're not, we're not getting the revenue for it, that's the problem.
No, no.
Right, we can change how, well, I don't know.
Well, there's a formula that they use that says, okay, you're getting this much of a break on your taxes, and then the state's going to reimburse us. They're not reimbursing us for the whole amount that that break is.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I'm not sure the exact numbers and how they work and stuff, but I agree with Peter. I, I, I think there's something that we're missing or we're losing. Because if it was taxed at its current value without the state involved, our revenues would be higher than what the state's reimbursing us for.
Is that, is that a research to make sure we're getting as much as we can out of that? Is that something that comes from whomever the new Lister employee, is it from that group of people?
It comes from the state, I don't know.
It would come from the state. Our Listers would connect with the state. That's where I would say the conversation would have to start.
I mean, is this us looking at cash accounts? We're looking for money, we're not collecting from the state?
No. We, we process a bill for the state that says exactly what the tax break was and what it should have been before.
Yep.
We have all that information.
What I don't know are the formulas of how, like, I, you're not reimbursed through the pilot program, you're not reimbursed dollar for dollar for your own community. It's a state program. So what I don't know are those formulas and how that works. I, I just don't know. I haven't got into the pilot program a lot. But we certainly can, I mean, we can ask the questions, right? Like, what are the formulas?
Right.
I mean, we can certainly do the research.
Are we leaving money on the table somewhere?
Yes.
Well, that's the question. That's the question that Peter brought up a couple weeks ago, is theoretically, a 100-acre parcel, 75 acres of that would be, could be in current use, it gets a significant tax break to the landowner, and then we're not, as a town, collecting those taxes. It's something that theoretically is promised to us by the state, and the state's not ponying up for whatever the difference is going to be.
Are they ponying up anything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of, first step, can we look and make sure we're getting as much as we can? Second step, is there a way to make it?
It's on your page one revenue, Arianna, it's the program called land use.
Yeah.
Oh, so that's the check the state writes us.
Correct.
Right.
Between land use, between land use and pilot, it's those two.
Those two.
Great.
But you have to think, a hundred, half of Chester for 160,000.
160.
Yeah. Interesting.
Same sounds, though.
But it also has something to do with the education tax component, not necessarily municipal. So there, there's an equation there as well. So there's several formulas that we need, you know, we've got to get an understanding of how those calculations are done.
And get one of those two people that understands it.
That, yeah, well, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing, Arianna.
It's, you know, when I look at this.
I think it could get you the number between the two, but she couldn't tell you why.
We, you know, we take out that 180,000. It's, it's high, it's up, but I'm a little more comfortable trying to sell it with that 180 being looked at separately, because it is a bond that the taxpayers voted on, and they realized what that, what the repercussions were going to be with that, even though it took her three or four years to get into, till it finally kicks in. We're at 5%. A lot of the towns around here are 7, 8, 9%. There's some towns that are turning around and saying, well, we're going to level fund. And they're taking a hit, and they're, they're going to get some pushback on that, because I, I don't understand how you could possibly level fund without losing services or, or there's a cost associated with it. I, I would, it says 5%. I would love it to say some, under 5%. It's just not, almost for a selling point, not necessarily the number itself, but if it's, say, yeah, it's less than 5%, 4.5, 4.7 or something. So I was wondering about those two little areas that we can kick it down a little bit, and that would lower it. But then again, at the town meeting, it's going to be kicked right back up that 1%. So it's, it's a tough one. It's, we go through this every year, scratching our heads, trying to come up with an answer that I think is out of our grasp almost. It's, it's just, it's the way our country processes taxes and wealth and.
Well, it's, it's not that, I'm not to disagree with you, but I think the issue is we have uninformed voters. And so they come in and they don't want to listen to us rattle on about, you know, something that's boring to them. So it's like, oh, okay, town meeting, I'm sure, you know, it's going to raise my taxes 60 bucks.
Right.
You know, and, and that's the whole thing, is we're kind of stuck between what we know we absolutely have to have as a town and what people are willing to put up with. And so if, if we're dealing with an uninformed voter, they're not going to know.
Well, no. What people recognize is the tax rate.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and how it impacts them.
Right.
So we got a 5% rate increase, what's that going to add? Or 9%, actually, with the new building, you know, what's that going to raise people's taxes? Well, it's almost 10%. So you get your last bill, last year's bill, and you add 10% to it, and that's what you're going to end up with. And that's not comfortable for anybody.
Right.
No, that 5% is with the building?
No, no.
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 No, that's 5% without the building.
That's 5% without the building.
Out the building.
That's without the building, yeah.
Yeah, so 378,000, 378,000 is 9%. 201, which doesn't have the principal bond payment, is 5%.
Sorry.
So, yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I mean, we continue to beat the horse, but seems like it's already dead.
Well, some of those conversations that we had, you know, regarding the trustees of public funds, I, I think it would be a good idea to open the conversation up with them and just, and that's an area, it's, it's an elected position. And if you had people that were elected to it, and, and I appreciate the work that they do, the folks that are there, because they usually run unopposed, and no one wants that job, and no one wants to deal with it.
Right.
So they step up and they do it, and they do a good job. They do what they think is right, and, and they're managing there, and they're doing their time. But it's hard to engage in a conversation when you're steadfast in your beliefs to change anything that might be going on. And it would help, it would definitely help towards making that money go to areas that it was gifted to, to service, which is poor and needy and organizations that we.
And I love your idea of applying that, that fund to the warning, the warrant articles that are designed to help the people who are not fortunate, you know, need the help. That's what it's for. And I think that's a great idea, and your idea was also excellent.
Does Peter, the housing.
About the housing thing, I think that's a great idea as well. You know, and I didn't realize that there was almost a million dollars in that fund. I was thinking 3, 400,000, but.
That's in the, in the economic development.
Economic development fund, sitting on a, on 400 or something.
So we got 1.3 million dollars sitting somewhere being, not used.
Correct.
So.
While we have people struggling to pay their tax bill, that, it's just.
That's what, that's what staggers my mind.
Yeah.
And that's why I was asking, are there any other funds out there that are just sitting there and not being used?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean.
Yeah.
Those are the ones, there's a bunch of little ones in, in there, but.
Which we, yeah, last year we kind of tapped several of those, yeah.
And we've gone through it and explained it all, which ones are in there, what's happening with them and what's going on, but.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just hoping that at some level, the economy is starting to stabilize. You know, I mean, it was so volatile.
Yeah.
21, 22, or really 22, 23, 21, 22, 23, but really, for budgets, it was 22 and 23. I'm just hoping that if things will just stabilize, I mean, the bond payment, you're not going to see that increase again, right? Because it, it's made its jump and now it's there.
And now it's 180 a year for how long?
And now it's, actually, not 180, it's now a total of three. The 180 is the principal, Arianna.
Right.
So now it's there to the 347, and it's there.
Every year for three years.
Every year, every year for 30 years.
30 years.
But it will start going down. Like, as the bonds are paid, you, you start trickling down.
And this is the public safety, this is the public safety building, correct.
So, but you're not hitting that jump again. Like, next year, you're not going to see another $180,000 bond increase, right? So that's there, the, which is why I'm saying, which is why I've been focusing on the rest, because the rest is, that's, that's your general fund operating budget is the rest. Yeah.
Go ahead, Bill, you've been patient.
Thank you, Bill Lindsay. I have two questions on the budget, but for Julie's presentation at town meeting, I think it's very important that you separate out for those taxpayers who voted for the building, okay? Fire safety building, which we needed. To answer a really good question, what is the cost of sitting on that funds? What's your mortgage payment for the 30 years to pay up that building? If you had taken the money from the public fund account that we had, you wouldn't have to increase your budget, your taxes, and the building would be paid off. I know that's not going to happen, but when you ask yourself the question, when we're sitting on this money and it's not being used, what is the cost of the taxpayer? Well, you can, you can, you can figure it out what it costs. Every mortgage payment you make on that, on that building is public money sitting in an account someplace. So we could have paid it off, or came close, or utilized some of it to reduce the tax break. That was kind of a comment I wasn't really going to make, but in the discussion, I see how important it is to bring out the fact why it's really more than 5% or 6%. Operating expenses in everybody's household was increased. With that, can I ask two questions? On page four, we have a line item for auditing. And in 2023, it was 21,600, which was an increase over the previous year, and we budgeted 15,000. My question is, do we have the same, didn't we not have an auditing contract for a period of years?
We do. 2023, we were required to do a single audit, that extra layer of audit, because our grant succeeded 750,000 because of the ARPA money that we received, so.
So with FEMA money coming down, are we going to again get into that with matching, matching grants?
We will in 2025.
Okay.
2025, 2024 will be audited, and yes, there will be a single audit.
Okay, so we'll let that one go.
Yep.
One other question, next page, please, five. It's under legal, and we spent through December 31st, '23, 15,000. And we're budgeting 1,500?
No, we budget, I budgeted 2,000. I budgeted two. That is a line, do you want to, do you want to increase that for 2024?
Yeah, I think.
I'm hoping that Julian and Corey stuff will be.
I don't want to spend money, but I'm not sure that that may not be a realistic expense in your budget. Not for me to talk about, you can figure it out.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three was high because we had the quarry.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, there was a, there was a specific topic.
And we have Bailey Hill.
And we will have Bailey Hill, so maybe you want to up it.
Yeah.
And the quarry's not done yet, right?
No, but I think it's well on its way.
Yeah.
So, um, it's up to you guys.
So I just bring that item up.
Yep, thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Well, you're the one that has a better idea of what's going on with that expenses.
Well, now, yeah, now we are going to be adding Bailey Hill.
Right.
Uh, but that's not zoning, that's going to come out of a different legal line.
I just didn't want to see it, you know, increasing that, but thank you.
I mean, you've also got, that's going to come out of the admin legal line, which has ten thousand budgeted. So it's it's just, I mean, you could maybe up it to five in zoning and.
Yep, no problem.
But. I don't think we'll be another sixteen thousand in twenty twenty-three for a zoning issue.
Okay.
I hope not.
Okay, so I got some, I got some questions that that may be not just quite shown up there.
Okay.
Okay, so in twenty twenty-four, we're going to ask for a two hundred thousand dollar bond for Andover, but that's not in the budget because we're not making any payments now, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, paving Andover Road.
Oh, paving Andover Road, yep.
Right, so that won't show up in this budget because you're just going to, we're going to vote that at the town meeting.
You vote that this year, that will affect, that its first payment would not be till twenty twenty, actually twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, all right.
Actually, it could even be twenty twenty-six, but yes.
Okay.
That won't affect this budget.
Okay, so the high school sidewalk study.
Yep, that's a grant.
That's a grant, but there's a match in there, we have to.
That's all in the grant fund.
That's all.
So your forty thousand dollar transfer to the grant fund.
Has already been done.
That's budgeted, so that forty thousand dollars, we, but we transfer from the general fund to the grant fund every year to cover those matches.
Okay.
Unless it is a construction project and the match is budgeted within the capital plan.
All right, yep.
Got it?
All right, well, no, I just wanted to make, you know, that's, you know, they're lined in there, so they're in there because the grant line doesn't call these out.
Nope, grant fund.
Yep, sorry, you know I was going to be like this.
Ask your questions, ask your questions, hopefully I have answers.
All right, so, so anything that's twenty-four other than the, really, the big paving number should be all in the, oh, no, uh, so what about the, yeah, the grant for the new hockey rink?
The grant for the hockey rink.
You've got a recreation grant, concrete slab, fifty by one hundred.
We haven't been awarded that yet.
Nobody told me we got a grant for a hockey rink.
The new ice skating rink, um, which it's it's just a concrete slab, but we haven't been awarded that grant yet, Peter.
We haven't been awarded that grant.
So it would, if if it gets awarded, it would be awarded early twenty twenty-four, we would construct in twenty-five.
It goes in twenty-five, so that wouldn't come up till then.
Correct, that wouldn't be this year.
Right. Yep, okay, no, those are the ones that I lined out.
Okay.
Everything else was out there for later.
Okay.
So I, see, for me, when I come, if I was going to sell this budget and tell you what the increase is, the big, the lunker that's killing, it's the ambulance.
And the, just the operating, you mean?
Well, yeah, because really, that's the one that, you know, we said two hundred and thirteen, and whack, it took an eighty thousand dollar jump. You know, and it's a service that we have to provide.
Yeah.
And that's really where the biggest, the biggest hit is, we, I mean, it's been under budgeted for a while, but I mean, it's just like, you know.
And that's where, I mean, that's where I'm hopeful for a few things. I'm hopeful that, um, with having two AEMTs responding to calls, we should start, we could bill at much higher rates. So we should be seeing higher response, uh, higher revenue. But the other problem with ambulance billing is we, it's, again, it's out of our control, but it goes back to Medicare reimbursement.
Right.
So Medicare reimbursement rates are still from nineteen eighty-nine.
Well, and they're not going to go up.
And so there is a group that is fighting in Congress about the Medicare reimbursement rates. Whether or not they will be successful, I don't know, but there are many states that are all going to Congress together, because this is not just a Vermont thing, this is a federal thing. And that, really, those reimbursement rates are literally from nineteen eighty-nine. And it's a shame, because the cost of everything is going up and towns are not getting reimbursed.
Which goes back to my point that these, these budgets, though local, are affected by national items.
Oh, absolutely.
Things that are happening.
Absolutely.
And we're taking the brunt of it as things get disregarded or just left the same on federal level and the higher levels, we end up having to pay for the extra because we're providing that service without having the help and the reimbursement that we normally had. The burden just keeps shifting more to the local taxpayer.
Yep.
And the money at the federal level, I'm sorry, but it goes to buy bombs and military defense and two hundred, three hundred different bases all over the world instead of taking care of our citizens. And I.
Well, there's, there's also the waste.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what I, the point I was just about to make, is the more money you collect and the more money you have, the more money you want to spend because you have it, and so you waste it on stupid things that.
Totally agree.
Don't make any difference, and I would rather have us be able to spend our money the way we see fit than having somebody in Montpelier tell us how to do it, or somebody in Washington DC tell us how to do it.
Totally agree.
And so, again, I'm going to make the appeal to the citizens to get involved in this process, because the more people who know what's going on, the more informed they are as far as what we can afford and what we can't. You know, just sitting here thinking about, there's, there's no fat in this budget, there's nothing that we can cut without cutting some kind of service. And so we don't want to do that, nobody wants to lose a service or lose something. And so we have to understand as a citizenry what the benefit is to us for what services we're getting and whether we're willing to pay for it.
That's right.
It's a tough question.
Yeah.
I'd love to see the budget go down, that thirty-six thousand, that's going to hit us when they do the voted articles.
Another thought that just popped into my head, I don't know how you guys feel about this, so the capital, and I don't know if this is just kicking down the road, so the capital plan surplus is about two seventy-nine. We're taking about fifty for round numbers to pay off those two loans, leaves you at two twenty-nine. Of that two twenty-nine, two hundred is set aside and earmarked for the sidewalk match, which is not going to construct in twenty twenty-four, okay, it's just not. I have to apply for additional funds, so your, reality, that project is not going to construct probably until twenty twenty-six. Hopefully twenty twenty-five, but reality, probably twenty-six, so.
You're being optimistic.
I'm being optimistic.
I am.
Because I'm already four and a half years in, I'm hoping for two more.
I'm, I'm worried that it ever gets done.
Well, and and that's a discuss, that's a whole nother discussion, but I do wonder, I mean, so this year is the jump. What if you split that jump between two years? So what if you took, of that one seventy-six, what if you took, what is it, seventy bucks, seventy thousand, eighty, eighty thousand? What if you took eighty thousand more for, either from your capital plan, from ARPA, and said, we're going to offset so that it increases half step in twenty-four, and then the second half step in twenty-five? So in the twenty-five budget, I mean, you just have to know that come twenty-five, you know, you're, you're taking an eighty thousand dollar jump, but it would, but it could ease you in a little bit more, I mean, it's just a thought, it would be taking maybe eighty from ARPA. I mean, it's just something to chew on, I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's helpful to ease into it.
Over two years as opposed to this one.
It's not spreading that jump, it's contributing, it's contributing eighty grand from the other fund. So, yeah, the feel is that we're spreading the jump, but we're taking eighty grand from somewhere else.
From something else, not the general fund, so your, your impact to the general fund is being split.
And if you took it from ARPA, it wouldn't.
It wouldn't affect the capital.
For, you know, other projects that we had ideas for and stuff, but it was relief money for times when they were tough during COVID. It's something that was supposed to be used to help you get through budget cycles and budget times.
Well, and it was during COVID that we made the.
Correct.
Bond.
Correct, the bond went over because it was constructed during COVID. I mean, it's just a thought, something to think about.
Say those words again.
So.
The bond went over because it was constructed in COVID. So using ARPA, how much did the bond go over?
Well, we, so three, about two hundred and eighty thousand of ARPA funds have already gone to the cost overruns on the public safety building. And, yeah, we won't get into why there were cost overruns other than COVID, but.
Not tonight.
Lee and I will. We can have an off the record one about that, but anyway, um, it, I don't know, it's just a thought and not a decision you have to make tonight, right? You're not setting your budget until your next meeting, so you have time to think about this, but it's a thought.
I think that would be a helpful way to, to ease that, that jump, because it would lower the nine, it would lower that, that three seventy to half, and then next year it would bounce up another.
Be way down.
And it, you know, and it will go up next year, but hopefully next year will not be like this year.
Maybe the rest of the operating expenses would level off next year, I don't.
No, you're going to buy a greater.
Stop.
Listen, when he said there was, when it's, that's a fly-by-wire is what it is, and once the electrical system goes in those, it's like you go push it off a cliff.
Yeah.
You know?
Technology.
Huh?
Technology.
It is, right.
We are getting through twenty twenty-four's budget right now.
Yeah, I know, right.
So, um, the budget that we set, then we add the warned articles or whatever.
Correct.
To the bottom of that.
Correct.
And that's something that we vote, that's by paper ballot?
That's not by paper ballot from the floor, that's from the floor.
And are we asking people who are asking for the funds to make a presentation?
Yes, we did this year, we got back to, you know, the, the whole pandemic piece is over, so people can come and they can start presenting. I will tell you one thought that I had. I think it would be nice if there was somebody presenting that talked about their financials. We've never asked for that.
Yeah.
But some of these organizations, I can tell you that I know, are, are sitting on bank accounts. And so I, you know, I don't know if we're walking a fine line there, I don't know, but I do feel like, given the current times, of sending them a message saying, we expect somebody to be there.
Yes.
And we expect a discussion about your current bank balances and financials, and that we think it's important for that discussion.
An unreasonable request at all.
No, but I have a, I have a procedural question.
Yeah.
Those are warned as articles, they are voted on the floor by residents at the meeting.
Right.
What is our role, what control?
We, so I can't make them, I can't make them.
We can't say you must in order to be considered.
But what we can say is before Article Five comes up where you start, I can, in my budget presentation, which goes first, make a statement to the audience that is here. So in these next articles, I have asked that there be representation here to discuss it.
Yeah.
And representation to talk about their financial standing.
How about what percentage our contribution is of their overall budget?
Well, and it's that, but there are some that are sitting.
Yeah, if you have a group that's sitting on a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and they're asking for money, why aren't they using that money?
Well, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that we are not the ones they're asking.
They, they don't ask us.
Right, no, but the point is.
They're asking us as residents, that we get one vote.
Right, but the point is.
We're allowed to speak and talk to the subject, yeah, sure, we're, we're citizens just like everyone on the floor.
And they're, I'm just pointing out, we only get, we get one vote as a citizen when it comes to these articles.
There were, there was a few years ago, before COVID, where people, Bill, you probably remember this, where people, these agencies were not sending people to talk, and there were several people that said, if you don't have somebody to hear, and there were a bunch of them that got voted down that year because they had nobody to answer a question. And they said, nope, you can't even come, we're not, we're not, and they, and a lot of them got voted down.
Nineteen seventy-eight, my mother took out the gas at its grange because no one was here.
Well, I, I think that makes sense to let people know what the actual financial status, you know, if you're asking for a bunch of money and you're sitting on a bunch that you're not using, why should we fund that?
Right.
Could you bring your P and L, if they're, they're nonprofits, the P and L sheets should be public information?
They should be, and I can see why they wouldn't want them published in the town report, I get that, but be prepared to answer the question. Let us know what your balance sheet says.
You're asking our community for money, come visit our community.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. The other question I had was related to the trustees of public fund, is, is, that's an annual vote? Or do they run for more than one year?
They run for three years.
Three years.
So I'm not sure who's up this year, but yeah.
So, how many slots in that?
There are three positions.
Are they all filled or?
They are all filled, and it's very hard to find people to run.
Come on, Bill.
Is there a deadline for?
Just like, just like select board positions, it's in January.
Okay.
Yep.
So if somebody wanted to run, they would have to get.
Come in and take a petition. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
For trustee of public fund.
Oh, come on.
So just, just show up at town, at the town clerk and answer a form.
Yep, just like, yep, just like if you were to take out a select board petition, yeah, same, exact same process.
Just get a thirty-five signatures or whatever.
Twenty-five to thirty signatures, it has to be back, I don't know the date, it's the end of January.
Right.
And, um.
Twenty-six or twenty-five?
Oh, this isn't for, this is for warning articles. This isn't, this isn't for officer positions, it's, um, I think, I feel like it's January nineteenth, but I can't. Do you remember from yours that you took out?
Yeah, it was in the twenties, it was in the last week of January.
Okay, so maybe that one was the twenty-sixth.
So.
That could be the twenty-sixth, anyways, end of January, but you should come get your petition now, if you know people that are interested, absolutely.
Well, I'm just putting an appeal out there because it seems like.
Yes.
They have some more people.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm not taking it on.
It's a conflict of interest with the select board, anyway.
Interesting discussion.
Yeah.
But discussions that need to be had, and I like Arianna's idea, maybe there's a couple of select board meetings where this is the only thing on the table, let's talk about the future, and I like the idea of pairing it up with, you know, you want recreation and you want trails and you want, you know, a rec department and you want.
So let's talk about the roads and the rec department.
And let's talk economic development, and then, because, you know, we often look at just the budget, but there's also topics, and this is where that other position in zoning would be helpful to somebody to really work on the economic development of the town, because it's not just your budget, it's your, it's your grand list, it's grow the grand list, grow the grand list, right? So what are ways that we can do that?
Yep.
So, yeah.
So I have to give my apologies because I did not recognize all the people in Zoom land when I pointed out that Bill should get an award, he's the only one sitting here, but we have a number of people.
On Zoom?
On Zoom, so I didn't mean to ignore you, sorry.
Sometimes I look at that board and just take it for granted.
Yeah, exactly, it's like.
So do you feel like, so your next meeting, you would not be signing the, the warning yet. You'll get a draft of it at the next meeting, and you'll get the budget. Typically, you would set the budget at the next meeting, but if there is an overflow and you just need that one more meeting, the warning would get signed, where's your memo, Ernie, your timeline memo? The warning has to be signed.
I think that's nineteen.
The select board have to sign the warn by the twenty-fifth, warning by the twenty-fifth, which is when your budget would also need to be set. So you could, you have any time between the nineteenth and the twenty-fifth to do that, so you can have two more meetings if you need them.
This is where I'm obliged to say, I will not be in person for the meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay.
I will be on Zoom.
Okay. So anyway, do you want to see, do you want me to play a little bit with?
Splitting that increase?
Exactly, and what else, could we maybe look at ARPA funds for, I mean, do you want me to look at that? Do you want me to go down that road and plug it in, what do you think?
I, I'm kind of conflicted because the ARPA funds are ones that we should use for like something big.
Well, but if, it's theoretically going to the public safety building.
Right, yeah, and I'm not disagreeing, I'm just thinking, like, if we ever get a point to where we might be able to buy the solar field.
In twenty twenty-six.
Might be nice to have some cash on hand to do that, but on the other hand, I do, I, I think that protecting the taxpayer from a huge hit in addition to a huge hit everywhere else is something to look into, so.
Well, the, the question on the solar field, if you really think about it, is we have the rest of the field there, and we have the infrastructure there, and it's like I'm saying, we should propose that we're going to build a solar field, so we have to push Green Mountain to change it, they're going to sit here and say they want more renewable infrastructure. You know, what does it take you and I to put a proposal together that says we should build an additional solar field?
Well, that you could, probably could get funded, the reason I'm having trouble getting, when I look at grants, is because it's an already constructed field.
Well, there you go, so, I mean, we have the whole rest of the field there, and it's an excellent use of a floodplain.
Yeah, and as I said before, the, the holdup is, the substation is undersized.
Well, yeah.
Adding, but you're right.
We just have to leverage it.
Right, the, the issue, I mean, I, I'm always my own worst enemy, but the issue is Green Mountain Power may or may not want to be green, but they're being pushed to be green by the feds.
Right.
So, yeah, then you got to go, okay, so we're pushing on Green Mountain Power, and Green Mountain Power is going to push on the feds, and you know what that's like. You know, I, I think it's worth inquiring about to see what it would take for them to upgrade that substation, and then we can build a system because we could, we could double, easily double the capacity of that field.
Right.
By building a new.
So, I mean, that may be the real way to pursue. You know, if you're having trouble getting grant money to buy existing one.
Constructed field, yeah.
Yep.
And if we put up trackers and it shades their field. Did I say that out loud?
You did, with a microphone.
The leverage is not going to work because they don't want to sell it.
No, they don't, no, the one, the person you're trying to, what we're trying to do is leverage Green Mountain Power to fix one transformer.
Oh, okay.
That's what you're after to do, because that's actually holding up even private people in town. You want us to put a system up in your town, in the town that's, you know, we're in ten percent of capacity.
Yeah, substations that.
Go back to Julie's question. ARPA's, ARPA funds, three or four hundred thousand we still got, ARPA is COVID-based. Is there a moment where the government says COVID's in the past, you can't spend it?
So we, so we have to obligate our funds on, by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, we have to expend by twenty-six. So you are going to have a discussion in twenty twenty-four about where are the rest of these funds going? That, that is going to be a discussion, that you're going to be. That, that is going to be a discussion that you're going to be starting.
That makes me feel.
Probably in March.
Based on the pace of the solar field discussion.
Yep.
That if they need to be obligated by the end of twenty-four, I think I've asked this question before, will we know enough about the solar field to obligate it by the end of twenty-four? If not, if we project ahead and take the risk, it feels like offsetting eighty thousand right now out of respect for the taxpayers and acknowledging that everybody's grocery bills are going up, the town's grocery bills are going up, but we just found eighty thousand in the couch cushions, so we're going to do this this time. I feel better about it as long as we don't pretend it's not obligated, right?
Right.
It's, it's a gamble if we don't do it or don't use it because now then, uh, the discussion has to turn around, well, we have to obligate it by the end of the year, and during the year, there's a lot less options than there are at this budget time right now with what's going on. So during the year, it'll be, I don't, you know, where do you go?
The other thing would be to have the ARPA funds by the buckets, right?
The ARPA funds.
By the, the plow buckets, the, whatever, the blades.
Right, well, right, but I mean, the problem with that is, you know, you, we buy blades every year.
Right.
So you don't, you don't want to use the funds for, um, things that are, that are annual operating expenses, which is why I would not suggest that you take a hundred and seventy-six thousand of ARPA funds to pay that whole payment, but stepping it makes a little sense.
So the reasons not to do it are because we might want to use the eighty for something else later. Does anybody object to the idea of offsetting that payment?
No, I, I'm, I'm for, you know, to offset that jump in half.
Okay, so why don't I, I'll pull some things together, I'll pull that, and I'll, I'll pull anything that looks like it's truly a one-time, like anything else that's truly one-time, and we'll just put them, put them there for you to discuss.
Yeah, I, okay.
Just be your discussion.
Can one of those, because I don't, I'm exhausted, but.
It's getting late.
We've got computers and IT in four or five places here, and they all seem to be jumps from previous years, so as you do those one-time things, can you give us a little paragraph on what we're spending on computers and IT in twenty-four?
Yeah, I started, and I'll just very quickly tell you that, um, the reason that I've pulled our IT support service out of each line is it is extremely confusing to break it down that way, and what we've been doing is not accurate. So I'm pulling it out and I put IT, the IT service that we pay for.
Yep.
From VC3, I'm putting that in the communication line.
So that would explain.
As a whole separate budget because.
That would explain.
Breaking that by department is just way too complex.
That explains why where I'm seeing it here, the twenty-four number doesn't match anything in twenty-three.
Correct.
So that is explanation enough, thank you.
Yeah.
So we're not making some gigantic upgrade. We're not, no, great.
No, we are switching companies. We are switching, we are switching service providers.
ISP, internet service providers or support service providers?
Support services. Our IT support services, we are switching primarily because we've been having issues with them this year, um, to the point that we lost our server for a week, and that never should have happened, and we sell all kinds of things. So we are switching, but the biggest reason is because I learned that the IT company we're using is actually outsourcing their services out of the country. And I'm not comfortable with that in my government computers. Where I have links to federal stuff, so we are switching.
Great, thank you, and thank you for the explanation.
Yep.
So we're good, we'll make that minor change to the step for the increase for the emergency service building.
Okay, yeah.
And a little list of, one from column A, one from column B, for any other options that we would have that we might consider for use.
And you guys can just, yeah.
ARPA money.
You guys can just, or any other funds, like if there's anything else that could come out of capital or anything, I'll, I'll just.
Economic.
Dig, or economic development, I'll just dig and see what I can find. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's tough, it's a tough one.
Anybody else anymore for the discussion, any more comments?
When do you want to, um, this does not affect your budget this year, um, this is a contract year for me. Um, when do you want to have your discussions in executive session about if you want me to stay? My anniversary is the beginning of March, and usually you do it so, while, while the current board that, that had to deal with me that year gets to, gets to do it. So you want me to start at the next meeting and?
Actually, yeah, yeah. Okay. I wanted to be here, I won't be here.
It, it, it's not going to be one meeting.
Great.
And you guys can go down, I mean, you're not going to rewrite my contract in one meeting, maybe you will, but you don't usually. Um, so you, and you can always, um, because you'll be on Zoom, they can always, in that executive session at the end, go down to my office and use my space, um, so that you can be on the phone.
We can make sure somehow we get you hooked, and even if it's just on the telephone.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
To at least be part of a conversation.
Yeah, just have a sense, also because this is my first year, so I have no idea what that process is, so that'd be great, thank you.
So I will.
You're supposed to bring your donuts.
Excellent. So I will send you my current, I'll send you the current contract.
Yeah. Thank you, Bill.
New business, future agenda items, I think we just kind of covered that.
We just did, we did, we're done.
You already wanted, want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion, Ariana's the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks, Heather, thanks for hanging in there, hope you're feeling better.